We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council regular voting meeting for tonight, which is Monday, April the 15th, Tax Day 2024. And our invocation will be done by Pastor Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church. And then our Pledge Allegiance will be led by our Mayor Pro Tim, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to call on your name. Thankful, Lord, for the many blessings of life you bestowed upon each one of us. And, Lord, in this meeting tonight, I just pray you'd be in the midst, give them wisdom and knowledge and to make the right decisions for their community. And, Lord, help us, Lord, to lead God and direct in our life and have your will in way, and we'll be so thankful. Give you praise, honor, and glory for everything you do. In Jesus' name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every team justice for all.
I would like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Voting Meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a city council meeting where agenda items will be handled officially from the actions that were taken on last Thursday in our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues in the meeting tonight before we conduct our business. And I will highlight some of our protocol issues because we have been seeming to get off track a little bit, so we will re-implement or talk about some things that we want to highlight. But I ask you, please, keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, done with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. We have been veering from this requirement. I think people are passionate about their concerns, and we understand that. But individual attack is when you name someone's name. We want you to stick to the issue. Don't name anyone's name, calling them out, and/or saying, as a group of individuals, "You all," or "You council members," or "You people." We want you to stick to the issues and not make it personal. We are a city of civility. We actually were granted that award from the Georgia Municipal Association and the Council and myself. Not that we're 100% innocent at all times, but we try to conduct the city's business with respect and professionalism in how we deal with the citizens and how we handle the citizens' resources and money and time, so we require the same of our citizens. You receive a warning from the Chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the chambers. This was when I was on City Council, almost 20 years ago. We had this as a requirement, and I thought, "Whoa, that's pretty harsh. You know, we don't take you out the chambers. You need to leave." And so when I became the mayor, I said, "We don't need that." People weren't going to get, you know, upset and start continuing to disrespect and say, "You better do this," and, you know, make threats. But we've been veering away from that, that people have gotten where they feel entitled to do that. So we are reinstituting. I'll say one time that this is your warning. It's not a personal attack. If you do that again, then Police Department will ask you to leave the chambers or escort you out. So we'll just make certain that we stick to that requirement. Only one person speaking at a time. Do not applaud or react to speakers or speak to the audience. Cheer, carry on the conversation when you're at the podium. So again, we have, you know, individuals and community, citizens that come to the podium to give us comments, and they may be really excited or passionate about an issue, and it's a zoning concern, and we don't want you turning around, talking to the developer, talking to your neighbors, and carrying on conversations. When you're at the podium, speak to the committee chairperson or myself. Don't turn around and have conversations. It can be combative, talking back and forth to the developer or whomever else, the applicant. So please just talk to us. We will take your concerns into consideration and act upon it and have staff return with a recommendation. So, but we ask you not to talk to the staff or to talk to the applicant. And we're only required to accept public comments during a required public hearing. So a development plan is not a public hearing. So unless it's a zoning issue, we really don't have to open up the floor for comments. But we're definitely here to hear and understand your comments. But that can be done in citizens' and delegations' time. But if it's not a public hearing, we don't really have to. It's not open for citizens to make comments about a zoning hearing. So all of that said, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask you put it in power mode, just turn those off, or put it in silent mode, and so they won't be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions of additional information that we did not receive at our legislative work session. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience if it is a public hearing. And each side has 20 minutes. The opposition has 20 minutes, and those in favor of the item have 20 minutes as well. And each person has five minutes to speak. When you come to the podium to speak with your five minutes, we ask that you will have filled out a card, a speaker card, and that you would hand that card to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, who has a beautiful Delta red on tonight. If you would hand her that card, we would love to have that information. We need that for our record. So after that, come to the podium, give your name and address, and then you have five minutes to talk to us about your concerns. Again, just reiterating this point, I don't know if I've said it in the other comments, but when you come to the podium, of course, not turning around, talking to anyone except for the elected officials and appointed officials that are here. But it's not a question-and-answer format either, where you say, "Well, I want to take a poll. How many people have done this? And have you come over here?" We're not debating and being combative, getting back and forth into the semantics. Just present your concern and stick on the issues and not make it a personal issue. And address all of your comments to the Chair. If you have any printed materials, we ask that you would please make, give that to our city clerk. She will make copies and disseminate it to us. So hopefully, we're all on the same page, and it's just changed a little. We say the requirements and protocol every time, but I think it's become where you hear it, like your parents talking to you sometimes when you were younger, and you just don't listen until you get a ticket when they tell you to stop speeding. So we just had to reiterate it this time. But we do have a wonderful proclamation to give out tonight. It is in recognition of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, 17 years of service in Douglasville. It says, "Whereas the 17th anniversary of the Douglas County-Paulding County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is on April 22nd, and whereas the Deltas have been an exemplary pillar of service to Douglasville, Douglas County, community these 17 years. And whereas the service has included donations to Trinity Center for domestic violence, against domestic violence, sexual and child abuse, Martin Luther King Day program sessions for youth, including poetry contest, community speakers, college fairs, live museums, and resources for families, organizations for a blood drive with the American Red Cross, adopt a highway cleanup, and we really appreciate you picking trash up in the community, youth mentoring program, St. Jude's Walk/Run, donations to the Share House, Youth Against Violence Program, community baby showers, youth mentoring programs such as Delta Gems, Academy, and Embodied, September Saturdays gifting senior citizens, holiday gifts and cards, and supporting partners in education, amongst other things. In addition to that, it's not listed here, but I know that you helped Judge Beau McLean with the Christmas time giving back to the community. We appreciate that as well, to the citizens and the young people. Whereas that service has included providing civic education to the community through voter education and registration drives, educating the community on duties of elected officials, hosting candidate forums, highlighting candidates seeking office in Douglas County, hosting economic empowerment forums, along with many other civic-minded service projects. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and citizens of the city, do hereby recognize the Delta Carroll-Paulding County Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., on their 17th anniversary, and wish them continued success in their endeavors in our city. So proclaimed this 15th day of April 2024." You're getting this on Tax Day. So let's give the Deltas a hand, please, and thank them for their service. We'll ask your illustrious President, Dr. Elaine Thurman, if she would like to come forward and give some comments. And, Dr. Thurman, I congratulate you on your new, you've received so many accolades. It's really hard to keep up. But you are, once you were appointed to the Board of Directors, or tell me, tell the community and citizens about that. Is that Mercer University, I think?
Mercer, yes. I am an employee of Mercer University, Assistant Professor of Early Learning and Development, and also early childhood education. And due to the services that I have rendered to Douglas County along with to Mercer University, I was awarded the Service Award. So it's a big accolade that come with a couple of dollars.
Oh, some dollars, too? I know, that's right.
Yes, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Congratulations for that as well, Dr. Thurman. We appreciate all the things that you do for us, and we're very proud of you and congratulate you for your new awards. You received so many, I was like, "This is a new one." But that was really nice at the university system. And you're the, are you the graduate advisor to the, the chapter of young ladies there on campus?
Yes.
Oh, that's a lot of fun.
Campus advisor for Douglas campus, Atlanta campus, and the Henry County campus.
Wow, that's a lot of young people. Woo wee! Well, thank you for what you do. You want to say anything about your chapter and the work that you all do?
Of course, of course. Well, good evening, Mayor Robinson, and members of the City Council and citizens of Douglasville. I am Dr. Elaine Thurman, President of the Douglas Carroll-Paulding County's Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I bring you greetings from our membership of over 300, and some of them are here with me today. College-educated, dedicated, devastating divas dedicated to causes greater than ourselves. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded at Howard University on January 13, 1913. We strive to promote academic excellence and provide assistance to those in need. We are a service-based sorority with more than 350,000 initiated members and over 1,000 chapters worldwide. The sorority's five-point programmatic thrusts consist of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. The Douglas Carroll-Paulding County Chapter is a sisterhood of progressive, committed women who stand as a beacon of light, providing public service support to improve the quality of life for the citizens. On April 22nd, we will be celebrating 17 years of service, scholarship, sisterhood, and social action. This last royal year, we participated in 37 social action projects and 35 service projects. Also, I am proud to report that on last year, we honored 31 high school seniors with over $22,000 in scholarships, and we plan to do the same thing this year. So I'm asking my sisters if they would join me as we accept this proclamation on, on our 17 charter anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thurman. We ask you to come forward, and we're going to take a picture with you. So congratulations. Myself and council members will come around, and Ms. Chelsea asks you to come because this is your sorority, so you need to come. And this is intensified pink that I have on tonight. This is not. I'm just kidding.
If we can get some to come over to this side. If y'all can, yeah, if you can scoot over. Come, yeah, right there. Perfect, perfect.
How far out?
Yeah, so if they can come right here. If you can come back here as well. And then if Councilman Davis, if you can move beside Chelsea. And then if the two of you could, yeah, if you could maybe come in the front. And then, is there someone else who can squat, too? No? Councilman Miller, if you could move this way a little bit, a little bit more. Perfect. Okay, that should be good. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. All right. One more time. One, two, three. And then one more time. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your patience, and that we always want to honor people in our community that take the time to do service projects. It helps us to better serve the community and to have a great place to live, work, and play. So we've done that. That's item number four. We'll move on to item five, which is approval of the agenda. So I will open the floor for a motion to approve the agenda of the regular meeting for tonight, which is April 15th, 2024. A motion, open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Miller. It's been properly moved in second for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, April 15th, 2024. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The same sign. I don't see any. So the regular meeting for the agenda for tonight is adopted by unanimous consent. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2024 Legislative Work Session and minutes of April 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting and Executive Session. Thank you, Coach. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by Coach Watts or Councilman Watts, second by Councilmember Estes, to approve the minutes for the March 28th meeting and April 1st meeting and executive session. Do we have any comments, concerns, anyone see corrections, deletions, or anything to the minutes? Okay, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Item 24-102 is unanimously approved. Now, to the consent agenda. Open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Oh, I had, there was a duet over there. Who got it, Ms. Acker?
I would say the tenor voice probably got it.
So Councilman Estes.
Estes.
Councilman Estes made the motion. Do I have a second, please? Councilman, Dr. Bird Downey, you want a second?
Second.
Oh, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second.
His name is not Councilwoman Downey. But yeah, he's second.
He did? Who do we get?
Go ahead.
You have him, Ms. Acker?
He did.
You do? Okay. Do we have any concerns or questions and anything related to the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Any corrections? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Economic Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. We'll move on then to Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you so much, Coach Watts. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Personnel Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you so much. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Estes. So we'll move on to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller. We do have business there.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. We do have a couple of items this evening.
Mm-hmm.
And, I'm sorry, my iPad's doing something crazy here. There we go. And the first item, item eight, is to remove from the table item 24-062.
Removing from the table?
Item eight is to remove. And so then we'll move on to item B.
Okay.
Yeah, so then if there's no issues with it, I'd like to make a motion that we remove from the table item 24-062.
Okay, I have a motion to remove from the table item 24-062 from the Chair. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Coach Watts. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Coach Watts, to, Councilman Watts, to remove from the table item 24-062. Do we have any concerns, comments, questions, anything that relates to, any dialogue as it relates to this item? I don't see anyone. All those in favor of removing this, approving removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Item 24-062 is removed from the table.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm moving along. Item B, 24-062, excused me, sorry, tabled from March 18th, 2024, was to consider a request for variance from Section 4.08 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet, and a variance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed at 30 feet, and the front yard setback on Veterans Memorial Highway in Land Lot 744, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 07441820013, and 07441820018. Application by Mickey Kapoor. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is down here to answer any questions we may have about this item. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This item is related to C and D. Previously, we had combined the two variances into one request, and the applicant made some adjustments to the site plan, so staff requested additional time to review those amendments. Since last meeting, we made some minor updates to the staff report just to add some more detail to the timeline of events for this project.
So, okay, so is item B not a consolidated version of C and D?
It is.
So do we take action on all three items? I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
No.
Legal.
You'll need to take no action on item B, and then instead take action only on items C and D.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, well, with that being said, guys, I make a motion, or, no, we don't have to, just no action?
No action.
No action in number B.
Okay, thank you, sir, for that. No action. Item C, item C 24-123 is to consider a request for variance from Section 4.08 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the minimum rear, excuse me, I have pop-ups, rear yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet on a landlot of 1.2 acres on Veterans Memorial Highway and Land Lot 744, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 07441820013, and 07441820018. Application by Mickey Kapoor. Ms. Marissa Jackson is still here if we have any questions about this specific item.
We have no updates to this item since last meeting.
Okay. All right, friends, this was specifically dealing then with the rear yard setback and going from 50 feet to 40 feet.
Yes.
And changing that small parking lot feature, and the condition was added in there to, for the shrubbery as well to be evergreen as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Counsel, did we have any questions or concerns?
No.
Beautiful.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. You have a great memory. Thank you for reciting all of that back to us. And I wanted to thank staff and Mr. Kapoor for making those accommodations and making the site better for the protection of the citizens and their privacy with your establishment. So thank you for the added expense, added time, and the consideration to make this project well. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, should you have something to add to that?
This, well, a question, I guess, for either legal or city manager. Do we have to, at this point in time, do we have to read the approved staff recommendations into the record, since this is, we're taking official action on this, or has it already been done?
All of the conditions are going to be listed on the written ordinance, so that's not necessary.
Perfect, thank you. And I would just like to echo what Madam Mayor said. We really appreciate someone coming to the community and listening to what's going on and taking into consideration the residents around that area. We really appreciate that. And with all of that being said, guys, I make a motion.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
Just one quick suggestion for staff in the future, not, it's too late for this one, but could you leave the previous plans as part of the exhibit so that we can see the changes that have been made? It's clear, that's all. Just leave them in the, leave them as part of the exhibit that we see.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Now then, I would like to make a motion, then, guys, that we approve item 24-123.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion to approve item 24-123 with the standards for approval of the variance that were mentioned earlier.
Second.
Thank you so much. I have a motion and second, a motion by the Chair and second by Mayor Pro Tim, to approve item 24-123 with the six recommendations that were given by staff and agreed upon by the applicant, and there are some ABCs to the six, especially the last one that has ABC. So, we have any concerns or questions, comments? I know the coach or Councilman Watts wanted to make certain that this was in the record, and hopefully everyone has read what was recommended, and the applicant agrees to. But if not, we can do that for clarity as well. Okay, I don't see anyone. Once that, okay, all those in favor of approving this item with the recommendations that were sent forth, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 24-123 is unanimously approved with, in addition to the recommendations that were given by staff and agreed upon by the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item D, which is 24, these pop-ups, 24-124.
Mm-hmm.
That is to consider a request for variance from Section 4.08 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed at 30 feet, and the front yard setback of 1.2 acres on Veterans Memorial Highway and Land Lot 744, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 07441820013, and 07441820018. Application by Mickey Kapoor. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is still here if we have any questions or concerns about this item. No?
We have no updates since last meeting.
Okay. Counsel? Then if there are no questions or comments, guys, I make a motion. Then if there are no questions or comments, guys, I make a motion that we approve item twenty-four dash one two four.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller N., and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item twenty-four dash one twenty-four. Do we see any concerns, comment, any questions about this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash one twenty-four is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Okay, and our next item here. Twenty-four dash one one four is to consider a request to amend Exhibit C of ordinance. Oh, these pop-ups. Excuse me, my apologies. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifty-six to amend Condition fourteen regarding camera systems throughout the community to require instead vehicular tag reader system to be installed at the entrance to the development for thirteen point eight three acres on Van Sant Road in Land Lot nine zero two, District eighteen, Section two. Parcel ID zero nine zero two one eight two zero zero one eight. Application by Starlight Homes, Georgia. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is down here to speak to us on this item. But guys, um, I actually, we spoke this morning and I was wanting to ask that we table this item to allow staff some time to look into a couple of things for us because it seemed like we needed to have some more discussion on it. And then that way we can have a committee meeting on that. And. Mr. Jackson, tell me again those meeting dates that we were looking at.
May sixteenth and twentieth.
Perfect, okay. So then, um, I would like to table this item to the meetings of May sixteenth and twentieth.
Thank you so much.
Is that good with everybody?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just had a question for, uh, staff. Is this going to be, um, an impediment on the developer or for this project? Is it going to put them behind that we have this meeting that is a month later?
Um, the developer is here to also answer that question.
Oh, okay.
Based on our assessment, um, the developer is still in the construction phase and the cameras might be one of the last things that they install. So it's not going to impede their construction, um, between now and the May sixteenth, twentieth meeting. Or at least it isn't anticipated to.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, do you mind if the, the developer applicant comes forward to answer? Please do.
If they'll just give us your name and add us for the record, please. And thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. My name is Greg Hasty. I'm Vice President of Land Development for Starlight Homes. The address is thirty-eight twenty Mansell Road, Alpharetta, Georgia. It, tabling, it should not affect us. It, we had a meeting early on with, uh, Miranda, everybody in planning. I believe the Police Department was also involved in that. We're, we're willing to work through this. That's not an issue. We have submitted for a final plat. And during that conversation, we had asked that, you know, let's work through this, but not allow this condition to hold up the approval of our final plat. Because even after final plat, we've got building permits we gotta get. If it came down to, it really drug out, you could hold COs, but I, I figure there's plenty of time to work out whatever this condition needs to be. But so long as it, as we can continue through that final plat process and, you know, everything's addressed as far as the plat conditions go, that this, this condition not hold us up.
Okay.
Would be awesome.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there any reason that, um, where's Ms. Jackson? Is there any reason then that by tabling this that it would hold them up from getting their final plat?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Um, I really appreciate you coming down and answering that for us and being willing to work with us while we sort this out. Very much so. Okay, thank you for that, guys. Then are we good?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that and, and for the applicant being willing, uh, to come down to speak to us. I know that we are, like you're saying, Madam Chair, we're, we're working on what is the best solution. Uh, we know the Police Department has a recommendation. We had other recommendations from staff. You all are in the middle of us trying to, uh, develop our city. We're, we're growing at leaps and bounds and we're just trying to make it a safe place. And so, uh, we're looking at options and of course, we'll be inclusive of flock cameras if it isn't just the reader and the city has the ability to help secure the area as well. And I know you want your product to be safe as well, so, thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're tabling it.
Yep.
We, yes, we haven't done it. She's in the, in the process. I was asking a lot of questions. But yes, sir, so her, uh, Madam Chair made a recommendation to table item twenty-four dash one one four to the meetings of May the sixteenth and May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And I stopped because I had a question. I didn't want to, didn't know if it was gonna, uh, hold up the developer and getting his product done. But if he can continue, as staff is saying, with the CO, final, uh, CO and all of that, then it should be fine.
Yep.
So I have a recommendation to, uh, table this item. Do, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to table item twenty-four dash one fourteen to the meetings of May the sixteenth and twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have any additional comments outside of me asking a million one questions? Do we have any additional comments or questions from staff or elected officials? I don't see any. All those in favor of, uh, tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Um, twenty-four dash one fourteen is tabled to the meetings of May sixteenth and May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right, guys, last one, I promise.
Mm-hmm.
And that is item number twenty-four dash one one six. Is to consider a request for variance from section four point zero eight of the Unified Development Ordinance. To reduce the minimum front yard setback from fifty feet to ten feet and a variance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed in the front yard setback on a lot of one point four eight six acres at nine three two zero, the landing drive in Land Lot two three, District one, Section five, parcel ID zero zero two three zero one five zero one one seven. Application by Jeff Walker. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is down here to speak to us about this item also.
Hello, we have no updates to this item since last meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel, the Chick-fil-A on Douglas Boulevard, are we, do we have questions? No. Oh, that's beautiful. All right then, you guys, I'd like to make a motion then that we approve item twenty-four dash one one six.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. Councilman, uh, Watts has been properly moved by Chair, um, Miller N. and second by Councilmember Chris Watts to approve item twenty-four dash one sixteen. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments outside of, we want a Chick-fil-A sandwich in this, uh, item? No? All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-four dash one sixteen is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, congratulations.
That is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much. You had lots of items and you got through them doing a great job with expediency. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Ms. Jackson, uh, for your support through staff. We'll move on then to the next item, which is item number fourteen. Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business, I just had, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under public safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no new business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business under transportation tonight.
Thank you so much, council members. We have gotten through all of the, um, committee, committees listed for the meeting tonight and now we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business that, um, the elected body would like to bring up? For the good of order. Meeting, no one. Okay, um, well, for me, I will say that, again, as I mentioned in committees, I apologize to my, uh, fellow elected officials, appointed officials, and staff and the citizens that we've kind of gotten, uh, out of hand with our meetings during citizen comment and that, um, all, everything rises and falls in leadership. So it's my responsibility to keep us on task. It's kind of like lobsters in a pot you don't know you're burning until we have a chef in a restaurant until the, the heat is getting heated up that you notice this out of hand. So we will continue, uh, to enforce, uh, the rules. We'll say the rules, we're gonna enforce the rules. And we are reinstituting back being removed from the chambers if you receive a warning and you deviate from that warning. We are not going to handle or stand for people giving words, being mean spirited, and attacking with your words individuals on this dais, individuals in the audience or our staff that works very hard. Uh, so it's just not gonna be tolerated. We're a city of civility and ethics and we're gonna handle ourselves like we've been doing with professionalism and we expect the same courtesy from the citizens. And if it can't be followed, then, um, they don't have the privilege to talk in the meeting. So, um, so I apologize for that, but it's gonna be handled. Um, I believe that's it. We did have yoga on the lawn. I heard it was great. People were sending pictures in. And so I know that, that was wonderful. And the Police Department has yoga at the PD on Wednesday from five thirty to six thirty. I'm planning to go. We'll see how my bones, when I get out of physical therapy, how I feel over there. Um, so, but that's about it for, um, updates. We'll move on to two updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Our Police Department.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What? Okay. Um, our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Do need an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Um, it shouldn't take more than a few minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, city manager. Um, so with that said, I apologize. I was just getting a text from the, um, fire chief. We did get lots of, uh, questions and concerns about a fire that was on Highway five yesterday. Um, and it's near, I think was in between Highway five and Bright Star at an automotive place or something. But there was, uh, a couple of firefighters. It was an explosion. Firefighters were thrown back and so, uh, but they were not harmed. They went to the hospital and they've been able to, uh, come, they were checked out and were able to come back home. But there was a, a really bad fire. So he's gonna give me, um, a full report. And I talked to the, our chief police who briefed me, but I will, um, present that report to the council probably through email and/or, uh, for citizens. I did receive calls. My, um, executive assistant said we received several calls today as well. So we're glad that the police depart, I mean, the Police Department, but the Fire Department, uh, firefighters are, are unharmed. And, uh, sorry for the loss of, uh, property in that area. So that's it. Now we have, uh, come to the point for comments from citizens and delegates. And if you sustain the meeting and like to speak to us, please come forward. You have five minutes to, um, give us comments about any business remain to the city of Douglasville. Okay, I don't see any. And that other recommendation is to have the five minute of not just Ms. Hacker being the keeper of the five minutes with the days of our lives, uh, sand and hourglass, but to have a five-minute clock in the back so the council can see the five minutes and the five minutes for the citizens to see either on the screen above us or posted somewhere so that we're all on the same page about, um, comments that are being made. All right, so we don't have any comments from citizens, delegates. It has been requested that we have an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. So I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session. Is there a second, please?
Second.